All of us, session of the city council meeting together. I apologize, my computer is somehow malfunctioning, it's still 6:29. So, I'd better not rely on it too much tonight. We declare we have a full forum precedent, present. All are here. Our opening ceremony will be led by Councilman Steve Buehler.
Thank you Mayor. Looking ahead, I was thinking we're kind of entering what I think of as the patriotic season, beginning with Memorial Day and Flag Day and Independence Day and here in Utah Pioneer Day and so forth. And I asked Jake to show a video that I found that I thought was an interesting patriotic expression and experiment. It's a flash mob and when I was a kid growing up, flash mob meant something different than it does now, but now it's acceptable and I'd just share this video with you. Next time you're driving around with your sousaphone in the trunk and you don't know what to do and maybe you could organize a flash mob and lift everybody's spirits.
Thank you. Tonight we have appears to be a scout troop here with us tonight. We would invite one of the young men, one of the boys to come forward and introduce their troop number, which schools they attend and what you're working on, merit badge or something like that.
Our troop number is 566. My name's Connor. There's Devin and Nate and then I go to the new school, New Armstrong and then Devin goes to Carl Sandberg and then Nate didn't tell me what school he went to.
Maybe he doesn't go. What merit badge are you working on?
I think he's whispering citizenship in the community.
Alright, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming to see what we do here tonight. You're welcome to be here and thank you for visiting with us. And so next on our agenda, the approval of the minutes from our last, from April 8th meeting to the council for action or discussion.
Mayor, I move for approval of the minutes of our April 8th regular meeting in 2014.
Thank you, we have a motion before us, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, the motion is properly before us, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll place the motion to approve the minutes of April 8th. To you for a vote, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, motion passes unanimously. Next on our agenda, we have some awards, ceremonial awards and proclamations to present and we'll begin with Councilman Corey Rushton, a proclamation on declaring the fourth Saturday in April is Arbor Day in West Valley City. Councilman Rushton.
Thank you Mayor, the proclamation reads, "Whereas West Valley City, Utah has committed considerable time, resources to the urban forest and has chosen to set aside a special day for planting of trees and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day is observed in every state in the Union and throughout the world and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of wind, water and of our precious topsoil, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify the community and whereas wherever they are planted, trees are a source of joy and spiritual and mental renewal. Now therefore we, the mayor and city council of West Valley City, do hereby proclaim the fourth Saturday of each April is Arbor Day in West Valley City, Utah and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect the trees and woodlands and to support the city's urban forests and urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations."
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we have a proclamation honoring Rancho Markets with our Business Legacy Award. Whereas the Business Legacy Award is a award recognizing local businesses that have made significant achievements and a longstanding commitment to doing business in West Valley City and whereas the award is symbolized by the bald eagle, the eagle's ability to fly and hunt are not entirely innate but are honed by observing its parents. This process is called imprinting, bonding with parents from birth and following their examples until the eagle can fly and hunt on its own. And whereas the city desires to recognize businesses whose imprint upon the community and the next generation uphold the city's legacy of unity, pride and progress and whereas in 2006, Ellie Madrigal identifying a critical yet underserved market in Utah's growing Hispanic population, opened a grocery store called Rancho Markets and in 2007, the Utah-born company opened Rancho Markets Store Number Two and main offices in West Valley City and continued to grow to a total of nine stores in Utah. Whereas this locally owned and operated company values their customers and strives to provide the best prices and quality products, including fresh bakery goods, fresh cut meat and extraordinary produce. And whereas Rancho Markets steady growth and entrepreneurial spirit in the grocery industry is recognized, as is their steady commitment of giving back to the community, participating in cultural events, education and leadership opportunities and in-kind and financial support. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of West Valley City, Utah, do hereby proclaim that Rancho Markets is a legacy business and hereby award Rancho Markets with the Business Legacy Award. My understanding is that her sister is here to receive the award on her behalf. If you'd like to introduce yourselves and then we have here a copy of the proclamation and the Eagle Award.
Thank you so much.
His only apologies is busy now. His sister is represented.
Is represented?
Yes. Thank you so much.
And if you'd like to come up and shake the hands of the council, we'd like to congratulate you representing Rancho Markets. We very much appreciate that. Very nice to meet you. Here's a copy of the proclamation and then if you would also deliver that to her representing our appreciation for the service you provide in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, thank you very much for being here and for what you do for our city. Next we go to our public comments section of our agenda. I did not receive the list, so I assume no one signed up to speak. Then we go to the city manager for comments.
None tonight sir.
To the council for comments. Seeing none, we'll move right along to item number eight on our agenda, public hearings regarding application number ZT2 2014 filed by West Valley City requesting an amendment to a section of our code regarding off-street parking requirements. So, any comments before we open the public hearing portion? Okay, we will open the public input portion of our discussion on this issue. Is there anyone here who would like to comment or speak to this change in our off-street parking requirements? Please form a line right here. Oh, maybe we don't have a line, so it looks like there's not anyone here to speak to that, so we will close the public hearing portion of this agenda item. And we will now go to the council for discussion, questions or action. Councilman Vincent.
Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance number 14-24.
We have a motion to approve this application, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, discussion to the motion. Seeing none, I will, well I will just make this comment, these and other items have previously been presented and discussed in a prior council meeting last week. So, these have already been discussed, so if we don't do a lot of discussion here, you'll understand why these have come up to us before. So, with that then, we'll place the motion for a vote, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, motion passes unanimously. We now go down to our resolutions. We have a number of these on our agenda tonight. The first one being Resolution 1461 to authorize the city to purchase replacement exercise equipment from a vendor, from various vendors for the fitness center. I believe that this was for such things as elliptical cross trainers, treadmills, recumbent bicycle, upright bicycles for the fitness center. So, anything else we need to present on that?
No sir.
To the council then for discussion or action.
And Mayor, and part of our discussion, as this was presented by the director of the fitness center last week, is that this is on a regular routine rotating basis to replace equipment and so this is a percentage of that equipment that needs to be replaced has been used past its use date and with that I would move for approval of Resolution 1461.
Motion is in order, we have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Rushton. To the motion then, to approve. I would also add a comment that this is within existing budget, there's no budget hearing or opening required. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion to approve this application to purchase replacement exercise equipment for the fitness center, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, motion passes unanimously. Next is a Resolution 14-62 to approve a sponsorship agreement with Land of Frost for recreation programs. This is where they contribute to our recreation programs, being a sponsor of those and pays for them, right, and they place their name on jerseys, a banner, different things and has been kind of a routine thing, I believe, in our city for a while. And so it's a good thing for the city and certainly for Land of Frost. So, further comments?
No sir, thanks.
Any, then to the council for discussion or action. Councilman Vincent, Councilwoman Lang.
Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution 1462.
We have a motion to approve?
I just wanted to thank them for their sponsorship, it is a big help to our recreational program.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
A second by Councilman Vincent.
And just make a comment, if our scouts out there have participated in any of our fitness center programs, whether it be soccer or basketball, they probably have a t-shirt with Land of Frost on it, so.
Thank you, further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote, all in favor of approving 14-62 resolution for this sponsorship agreement with Land of Frost for recreation programs, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, motion passes unanimously. Next we go to Resolution 14-63, which is authorizing an agreement with the court services of Utah to provide bailiff, bailiff, excuse me, and transportation services for the West Valley City Court, Justice Court. This is an ongoing program, this is a renewal of a contract, slight change in cost, but within budget, does not require any approval of an additional budget within existing budget. That will provide for the security and safety of the court and for all who attend there. Anything further we should add, Mr.?
No sir, thank you.
Okay. To the council then for action, Councilman Buehler.
Mayor, it's a little sobering to have this item come up considering the shooting that happened at the federal court yesterday and certainly this is a grave and great responsibility and we are renewing our agreement with the company that has done us a good job before as we've been informed and with that I would approve for, move to approve Resolution 14-63.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Hume, a second. Then discussion to, further discussion to the motion. Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote, all in favor of approving Resolution 14-63 to provide bailiff and transportation services for the city's justice court, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, motion passes unanimously. Next 14, Resolution 14-64, which is to approve a federal aid agreement for Utah, for UDOT, the Utah Department of Transportation, for the design and construction of the extension of 6200 South to the Mountain View Corridor, from the Mountain View Corridor to SR111. This also has budget attached to it, but I believe that those come, are and are already in the budget. And there was a question on this, is this, does this require a budget opening for the Class C road fund?
It does not indicate on the issued paper that it requires a budget opening, Mayor, but we'll note that these are recently received or authorized funds, so they may be in the semi-annual budget opening, I'm not sure. Jim?
The reason why we raise that, on the official documentation it does show that yes, it requires a budget opening.
And it is, it does.
But there was some question on that.
Right, thanks sir, so the finance director just confirmed for me that it is.
It does, because this is additional funds that have come to our city, right. Okay, thank you very much. Anything further, Mr. Pile?
Only I think it might be of interest just to mention that in total, this is something just under $6 million project across time, this portion of it is for mainly the initial and design work.
Okay, thank you very much. To the council then for action or discussion. Councilman Lordfeld.
Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution 1464.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Vincent, a second. Motion is properly before us, any discuss, further discussion? Seeing none, we will place it for a vote, all in favor of approving Resolution 14-64 for the design and construction of an extension of 6200 South, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no, motion passes unanimously. Next we have a Resolution 14-65 to approve a real estate purchase agreement with Kennicott Utah Copper along the Ritter Canal between 7200 West and 6100 West approximately. And, anything further, Mr. Pile, on that, that you would like to mention here?
Not from me, no sir.
Okay, then to the council for further action and discussion. Councilman Rushton.
Mayor, this is an important purchase to help the infrastructure of our growing city, not only with the road project, which is the main reason for this, but also a potential future trail, a crosstown trail portion through the city. So, I would move approval of Resolution 1465 with the further direction that we work with the current ownership to solidify our desire for a trail along this property as well as on their easement.
Thank you, we have a motion before us, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, the motion is properly before us, further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote, all in favor of approving Resolution 14-65, a real estate purchase agreement for property along the Ritter Canal, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, motion passes unanimously. Next we have Resolution 14-66, which is to authorize a public utility easement over a portion of West Valley City property. This is at 5335 South Ridge Village Drive and that is required so that Rocky Mountain Power can provide additional capacity to service exfil expansion there in the nearby property. Anything further, Mr. Pile?
No sir.
Thank you. To the council then for discussion or action.
Mayor, move for approval of Resolution 1466.
We have a motion before us from Councilman Vincent to approve Resolution 14-66, do we have a second?
Second.
I guess we'll, the latter one was Councilman Lordfeld, so maybe we'll put in that, I guess. Thank you, the motion is properly before us, any further discussion on this issue? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote, all in favor of approving Resolution 14-66 to approve a public utility easement by Rocky Mountain Power over city property at 5335 South Ridge Village Drive, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, motion passes unanimously. Now we go to Resolution 14-67, which is to authorize the, a master lease agreement on the purchase of, with some trust, equipment finance for the purchase of public safety radio equipment and everything around that as far as completing that transit action. This one is about, is $199,000 and my, and it does indicate that this will require a budget opening, meaning that funds are not currently available. And so the funds will come from?
Okay, thank you sir, and I do have an answer for that, I should have known this last week, apparently just had a brain cramp when the question was asked. There are funds that are available in the current budget, just as I had mentioned previously and I had made the statement, I didn't understand why this is a budget opening. The reason why is this authorization to move forward with the lease and the actual purchase takes into account the total amount across the life of the lease as opposed to the amount that's currently in the budget or is in the budget on an annual basis and so therefore that does require a budget opening for consideration.
Yes, in fact, it's quarterly payments of $7,119, so, okay. That's helpful. That's helpful. That's good information. With that, then, to the council.
I would move for approval of Resolution sixteen, fourteen sixty-seven.
Councilman Lang has made a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving Resolution fourteen dash sixty-seven to approve a master lease agreement for public safety radios, communication equipment, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say no, motion passes unanimously. We now go to Resolution fourteen sixty-eight, which is related specifically to this. Am I on the right one?
Yes.
Yes. And so this is the act, that's the master lease agreement, and now this is the authorization for purchase. So this is for the same item, but we also have to have a separate resolution in order for this to proceed forward. So, Mr. Pile, would you like to add anything to that?
No, sir.
Okay. Then to the council.
Motion to approve Resolution fourteen dash sixty-eight.
Councilman Hume has a motion to approve this Resolution fourteen dash sixty-eight.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Rushton. Any further discussion to this item? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving Resolution fourteen dash sixty-eight to authorize a city to purchase this equipment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion passes unanimously. We now go to item number ten on our agenda, the city manager submitting a budget for fiscal year twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen. Mr. Pile?
Thank you, sir. I am going to ask our finance director, Mr. Jim Welch, to pass around to the council, and this is fairly ceremonial, but also introduce just basically a description of our budget process. But what he's passing out is the proposed budget as it has been assembled and is being recommended up to this point. I might make mention that our budget proposal process is fairly lengthy in time during the, during the year. It actually runs from about the beginning of the year through August, from first estimates to final approval. So there are many iterations in that process. The one that we're currently at is frankly the step of giving to you physically the budget document itself, which, by the way, will be published electronically within a couple of days. And you will, next step then, be considering the information here and then adopting the budget tentatively in two weeks from now's time, is when it's scheduled for, assuming that the council is okay with the direction of the time. After that, then, the tentative adoption, there will be further refinement to that budget as it goes along, and final budget adoption is scheduled for August.
Any summarization of key points or anything you would point out to us at this point? We opt for a gap?
Absolutely, sir, I can certainly do that. A couple of the highlights are that from a trending position, I might first note that, and Jim, yeah, I want to just stay right here with this in case there are some specific questions, but from, from a trending standpoint, you might say that this budget year really illustrates the culmination of a lot of hard efforts on the part of the employee group, willingness and participation by them from staff standpoint, from a recommendation and a policy adoption standpoint from the council, going all the way back to the beginning of the reception, recession. It's been a hard and long slog out of that. But this budget actually, as it's represented today, really represents a lot of recovery in a very specific and particular way. Number one, we're not recommending in the new budget upcoming any kind of shortfall for the last couple of years. For example, we have balanced the budget and recommended balancing the budget by recommending that we use some of our fund balance or our ready day fund, so to speak. This year's budget does not include that. It does not include a property tax increase proposal or any other kind of tax increase proposal. It does include a recommendation for full funding of our currently committed services along with a small raise at the employee level, which we will detail further for you at a later meeting. This also represents a increasing trend as well in terms of increasing percentage of the overall budget of what that fund balance has been. You will remember in the year two thousand eight, two thousand and nine, I think it was that year, immediately following the recession, might have actually been one year after that, due to the effects mainly of the huge drop in sales tax that we had. We actually were at or very close to the minimum allowable by state to get through the budget year at that time. Our policy has been, through time, to try to maintain a twelve percent fund balance level. This budget reflects a seventeen percent fund balance level. So we've been able to accomplish all those needs from an operational standpoint, which don't include only the employee increase, but include things like insurance, retirement, anything else that was deemed necessary from a, from an operational standpoint to be able to represent. I might also add to a integration of our budget to the council strategic plan conversation earlier in the year, which, which wouldn't be readily apparent in this, but I'll point you to the conversation, because we will be having it later on, is that in our CIP budget, we currently, under this recommendation, we'll be coming back to you with a, about a one-point-five million dollar amount that you could prioritize, and we're not recommending in any particular realm right now, but one of the strategic plan directions from the council was to come back with a priority list for your considerations and funding plans, which we will do. You do have a small amount of money that's available in terms of that million and a half or so in the proposal as it sits currently. We also actually are making one recommendation that, from a fairly large size standpoint, I'd like to be able to come back after tentative adoption and be able to further refine. We're recommending that we spend nine hundred thousand dollars out of the CIP for funding of our fleet, which ends up in years of, of economic distress sometimes being a target once we build up that level. I prefer not to do that if we can get away from that. However, that is our initial recommendation to bring us to balance. What I'd like to do in the next couple of weeks or next couple of months is go back and look for further ways to reduce even that amount, put that money back in the CIP, and be able to cover that operationally. That will allow you to then at that point even have further, about, part of about two and a half million dollars to, to consider for those priorities. So that's a recommendation that we will be looking for ways to accomplish, so we'll come back to you. But just in short synopsis, that's basically the, the landscape, so to speak, of the budget this year.
Questions from the council? Councilman Hume?
On page number four, Jim, you have that one.
Thank you.
Under legislative right there, elections. The first one, very first one. You see, that's, the actual number is two thousand twelve and dash two thousand thirteen right here, only fifteen thousand nine hundred twenty-nine. And why is it so low, other like two thousand thirteen and fourteen, up to two hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars and seventy-eighty-nine? And below that, two thousand, actual number, two thousand eleven, and dash two thousand twelve is a hundred eighty thousand three hundred eighty. Why is the actual number in two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen only fifteen thousand nine hundred twenty-nine?
The elections are budgeted annually, even though elections are certifically held on a semi-annual basis. And so every other year we'll hold a major election, which uses the full budget. In the off years, that money will often get used for other things in legislative section or else we can appropriate it for other uses. But we just keep the budget level from year to year, and that's how the recorder's offices always handle their elections. So that represents the actual numbers of the expenditures. The original budget was two thirty-seven. The difference between that amount was either spent on special projects or it did roll into
Further questions from the council? Mr. Pile is wondering if you could just give us in a general way, not the detail, but obviously our previous revenue estimates did not cover what was anticipated to be all of the costs, and yet the budget now is, and we've got some, you know, for reserve or, what's the proper term there?
The fleet money I was talking about?
No, no, not fleet money, is it reserve?
It's fund balance.
And so what was the major change there in the revenue? Or was this a, was a reduction in costs?
Yeah. In general terms, sir, thank you for that question, but it really was both. In one sense, across the time, the budget process, which I noticed is a number of months, we further refined those revenue projections in the, at least for the last couple, three, maybe even four years, generally in that trend from winter to summer have gotten better. We usually project fairly conservatively, and usually by that summer, we'll, we'll have noted that the sales tax projections, for example, may have been better than we originally estimated. Another portion of the answer to that question really is, yes, we've come back and cut some costs as well or done away with some projects. One of the important pieces to this, and that's why I did notice that, is that normally we would have that nine hundred thousand dollars for the fleet expenditure, for expenditure, for example, within the general fund budget. And in this version of the tentative budget, we are recommending that from CIP for now, but like I said, we'd like to go back and look for even further ways to slim that up and hopefully return that money back to CIP.
Seeing no further questions?
We will, we'll preview it.
Yeah. Then that completes agenda item number ten. Next, we need a motion for executive session. I believe we'll be continuing our discussion from earlier. To the council.
Motion for executive session to discuss pending litigation.
We have a motion before us, do we have a second?
Yes, I think we have our other meeting, so this would be following then the housing authority meeting.
You are correct. Would you mind withdrawing your motion, Councilman Vincent?
I'll amend my motion to say, well, to have an executive meeting following our three housing authority redevelopment agency and?
Good. Thank you.
The authority.
There we go.
I was glad we said that.
Okay, thank you. Now the motion is properly before us. All in favor of that motion to hold executive session? After our following three meetings that we will discuss, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, motion passes unanimously. So then we will now have one last motion, we'll adjourn this meeting, and go to our next one.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Our regular city council meeting, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, motion passes unanimously. So we will end our regularly scheduled meeting and now turn, let's see, which one is first? Redevelopment?
I will call to order the special regular meeting of the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency here on Tuesday, April twenty-second. And note that all members of the agency are present. We have two resolutions surrounding one piece of property in the city and ask our chief executive officer to introduce Resolution fourteen oh eight for the body, please.
Thank you, sir. We're bringing before you a request to allow us to execute a writ of audit against Leventhal for demolition of the building at twenty-nine forty South and thirty-six fifty West. We are proposed contributors in that demolition with some RDA funds and the amount of third, well, it's just under thirty-nine thousand dollars. The total project cost will be roughly sixty-four thousand dollars.
Had some discussion in our previous meeting. Board members, do you need any additional information or questions or motions?
Just, just that they need to reverse that address number.
We will do that.
Okay, there's no other questions? A motion would be in order on this side of the business.
Mr. Chair, move to approve Resolution fourteen zero eight.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve redevelopment agency Resolution fourteen oh eight. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, we'll call the question and ask all those in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? That resolution passes unanimously. And, Mr. Pile, would you introduce fourteen oh nine?
Yes, sir, thank you. In relation to the same project, this resolution would allow us to award a contract to MKP Enterprises for the actual demolition of the Leventhal property.
Everyone loves demolition. Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution fourteen zero nine.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution fourteen oh nine, the contract with MKP Enterprises for the demolition of the property. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Also passes unanimously. Our new business tonight is to receive the RDA budget. Mr. Pile?
Thank you, sir. As in the previous meeting, we have submitted to you the upcoming year's RDA budget, which is contained in the document that you receive.
Any questions on the blue pages contained in the, in the budget? Any items of question, notice, interest? Okay, we'll note that we've received that budget. And any other business? Not, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Okay, this, this RDA stands adjourned. I think it's my turn. Call to order the special meeting of the housing authority. Note that all are present, and we have had an opening ceremony. Mr. Pile, we have one item of new business. Would you please present that?
Thank you, sir. That is the submittal of the proposed budget for next year, also included in your document as you have it.
The pink page.
Yes, that's correct.
And there's no action taken on that, so our next item of business would be to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This body is adjourned.
I call to order the meeting of the building authority. Note that we've had an opening ceremony and that all are present, and we have one item of business, Mr. Pile.
Thank you, sir. And again, we are submitting the budget for proposed fiscal year twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, and it would comprise the yellow pages in your document before you.
Any questions or comments from the members of this committee?
No, sir.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For adjourn.